Do you know the rules, Joyce?
I think I'll try to. You let me know if I run afoul. I'm Joyce Dietering. Thank you for letting me come back and it's good to be here. I am served as the Charter Committee Review Committee Chairman, and I'd like to thank the persons who served with me on that committee: Christine Bachman, Mike Greer, Tim Holman, Bob McGuinness, who's here with us today, Anna Maguire, Chris Roll, Mike Schubert, and George Strobel. We started meeting in January of 2022, and we held monthly meetings through October of 2022. And then we finally submitted our report in March. The way that we held our meetings, we actually went through the Charter and based on the 2017 version, we went through and read each paragraph of the Charter, discussed it, and decided whether there was any need for further review of it, and then honed that down and eventually came up with some suggestions which we've presented tonight, we'd like to present tonight. So, the city managers put together this nice PowerPoint for us, and we'll use that in going through it. So, the first one, let's see if I can, was to strike the requirement, well, I'll read it here. Strike the requirement that the city advertised in a newspaper of general circulation in the city for two weeks, and suggested consider allowing the advertisement on the city's website for two weeks. So, numerous sections require advertisement in a newspaper of general circulation. Any such requirement should be replaced by advertisement on the city's website. So, this came about really because when we, especially when we first started meeting in January of 2022, we were just starting to come out of the COVID-19 pandemic. And the, it was becoming very obvious that people were interested in technology and how important technology was becoming, and how people were getting away from the traditional newspaper. And most people were not reading the newspaper. The city had provision that there could be a posting of information, but nobody was coming into the city building. They couldn't come for a period of time. And everybody was looking at the Internet. So, we thought it would be good to look at whether it could be incorporated that the Internet could be used and the city's webpage could be used to provide the information that needs to get out there for the citizens, and do away with the requirement, which can be expensive, that it be published in the newspaper. But that is a requirement in the Charter. I think it's, oh, let's see. Thought we had it listed in here, but I'm sure your law director will find the, which section, oh, it's numerous sections. That's why we don't have it in here. It's throughout that those, so that's why it can be even more expensive. So, that was our first suggestion. The second suggestion, change it, was remove the residency requirements. And as you'll see, this was one that we really struggled with. The Charter says, requires that the city manager and the city, the assistant manager, department directors, assistant fire chief, and numerous other employees live in the city or other, within certain distances. And while the committee felt that there's really an important reason for the city manager especially and other people to live in the city, we understand that that's not constitutional. So, the, in order to be consistent with the law, there's probably, you know, probably need to remove that. And, yeah, that's, enough said, I guess, on that. The third item was technology. And this, this we really suggested was to add a whole new article. We didn't try to write the article or anything like that. But there, throughout the, the whole Charter, or actually, again, I, we thought maybe there should be a whole new article allowing technology to be used to, for citizens and staff and council, elected officials, to participate more fully in our government by using technology. Let me see if, let's see. So, this, it was contemplated would be that people could participate by Zoom meetings, by perhaps calling in. There's a number of ways that we learned through the pandemic and just everything developing through the pandemic of the, with the technology that can be used to allow people to participate and they don't actually be in, have to be in the building. So, we thought that was important to start accomplishing that and to use that and to get people, not only to open that up for people to be able to participate in government, but to be open and have it, everybody be able to see what's going on. And there was a concern that, that, that doesn't, that we're not allowed to do that under the open meetings section of the Charter and the Ohio Constitution and statutes. But we did look at that, and part of the open meetings law does specifically allow for the, for municipal governments to adopt charter sections that allow, that gives broader authority to, for home rule. If, and if it conflicts with what the statute or the statute says, then the home rule of the Charter applies. So, we, we can actually do that. And that's what the commission thought was important to look at and to try to do that. Because I think there was a lot of importance placed on people participating, trying to get more people to participate. Not only more people, but younger people, the people who are going to continue after we're not all, you know, here. Item five, strike the prime, strike mayor as primary person for city and primary contact for economic and community development. For some reason, they didn't like, the commission did not like this. And I, I'm not sure where that came from. But they liked the comment that the, that it's a city manager form of government and that they wanted to show that the whole council was as an equal. There was some discussion brought up by me that you have to have some sort of appoint person. And they thought maybe the economic development person should be that person. But, I mean, I think, well, this is a discussion for council to have, but, you know, you do have to have somebody. But that was something that they thought you should look at. Then there was some, what we call corrective actions. And these are things that are not, let me see here. Oh, oh, I guess we don't have this. These are things that we thought were important. They're not issues for, to, for the ballot or anything. But these are things that were going on, I know, when I was mayor. So, when we discussed it, I thought, oh, we're not enforcing those charter issues. You know, maybe we should point these out so that you know that they're in there, because I didn't know that they were in there, you know, or I would have been doing it. So, one of them was Section 12, or Article 12, Section 12.02, that electors of the city of Clayton may serve on one or more board or commissions. So, I know from time to time, we've said, you know, you should only have, serve on one commission or one board. So, I wanted to point that out. And then Article 7, Section 7.01D, says that the recommendations of the planning commission to council shall be advisory only. So, and I know that there's been, that's been either gray or not done at all. Because a lot of times, what, there's been confusion about when things come from the planning commission, how many votes you have to have to overrule the planning commission when the planning commission is really, according to the Charter, only advisory. So, wanted to point that out. And Article 6, Section 4.0, I'm sorry, Article 4, Section 4.031F, that all interest, interested persons present shall be given an opportunity to be heard prior to the final vote on an issue. Which, I never did that, you know. We had visitor comments at the end, so that was wrong. So, that's something. And then Article 4.031F, that emergency passage, ordinances that are passed as emergencies shall not be subject to referendums. So, they should only be necessary for, use when necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, or welfare. And I think this was probably more use, the committee was concerned about the number of emergency ordinances that were passed. But I think that was pretty much more during, like, right after COVID, I think is what Amanda said and looked at that. But always keep in mind, you know, that emergency ordinance really should only be used for emergency type things. And then on that next one, Amanda and Martina are going to talk about, but I did want to point out that on interim pay rates, the committee did talk about that. And the committees decided that we should just leave things the way they are. So, that's what the discussion of the committee was. Okay? Are there any questions that I can answer?
I had one question on that, on the very first item, on the newspaper notification. So, I'm assuming that you vetted this. But, so there's no legal requirements for going into a physical newspaper? Or is it only our Charter requirements? Is that the reason we've been doing that?
So, I can answer that unless you want to. So, the state just changed the rules that you do no longer have to advertise in a paper of general circulation. But our Charter still requires it. Now, when we were having the discussion back in October, there was still that requirement, but there's no longer that requirement. And for the past three years, we spent about $14,000 in advertising alone.
Anything else?
Joyce, the, is it a recommendation that the planning commission should be advisory only? There, was there a proposed change to our Charter?
That is in our Charter.
Okay, so, how does that interact with the requirements that we have as far as being as concerned?
Well, I think that we, we pointed, I, we point that out because I don't think that's how we've been treating it. Now, we didn't really have any discussion about changing that to maybe comply with the way we've been treating that. We didn't discuss, discuss that. You know, obviously, council would have the prerogative to put that on the ballot if that's what you wanted to do. But that's, that's just-
In the beginning, we, whatever the planning commission said was gospel. And it didn't come before council, as it does now. That started when we did Ellis Avenue, and they didn't put a turn lane in there. And Savina Avenue the same way, Joyce, which you drive every day, probably. But that, since then, what the planning commission decides has come before council. Greg, do you remember it that way?
No.
Well, I know that we couldn't change, we couldn't change the thing down on Ellis Avenue in Savina. And that's the reason we started bringing it to council.
Was that, was that, was that how the Charter was written at the time? Was that-
We didn't change the Charter. It's written just like it is now, but we weren't paying attention to it. Brendan-
Gotcha.
In recent years, I know there have been matters that have come before council that council has voted against the planning commission recommendation. And I know I've had discussions with council over the past couple of years that the planning commission is advisory only. It says that in the Charter. I believe it also says it in the codified ordinances. And that's where it also says, for a very small number of items, it takes a five votes to overturn. If you're going to go against the recommendation of the planning commission, for those few instances, it takes five votes. But overall, yes, the planning commission is recommend, or, excuse me, is advisory only, and you're not required to follow their recommendation.
Well, how can that be? How can there be anything that you wouldn't vote, that, that would require five, five votes if it's in the Charter that says that it's advisory only?
The zoning code does require, and I have to look it up, in very specific instances, it basically says that if you're going to overturn the planning commission recommendation, then you need five votes in this specific instance. When, which in my interpretation, reading that with the advisory only language is, it's still advisory. You still don't have to accept the recommendation.
Okay, that sounds like a conflict there to me, but-
So, it, does that then mean, so it'd be five votes when we're, when we're regarding zoning issues?
Right, on specific zoning issues, yeah.
Right, right, but not on other issues? And it's always advisory anyway?
Right, it's always advisory, no matter what.
Right, okay.
You don't have to accept-
That, that makes sense.
...the recommendation automatically.
Yeah.
So, the zoning part would be the one requiring the five vote option? If you're going to go against a recommendation of the planning on some other non, non, non-zoning issue, then it would be just four, three vote?
Yeah.
I've been the one on here the shortest, but my whole, whole time on council, I've always been under the impression, like it is, that it's technically only advisory here. Because hence why we vote on it, to accept it or not.
So, how can that only be advisory if you have to have five votes to overturn it?
Because they're not, they're not automatically agreeing with the decision of the planning commission. If, if the plan, and I agree with Brandon's interpretation of it, and I think maybe you're interpreting the same way, is the reason it's coming before council is because it is advisory on everything.
So, you have to have a supermajority to overturn the, the planning commission? Council has to have a supermajority to overturn a commission that's only advising it?
On zoning, on those specific zoning issues, according to the codified ordinances. It's still advisory.
So-
All of it is advisory. Every recommendation they make is advisory.
They can't legislate.
Yes, so how-
So, it's all up to us.
So, how can you have, then why do you have to have a supermajority to overturn an advisory opinion? An advisory?
My understanding is it's because it's codified that way, for zoning-
In Clayton?
For zoning issues, yeah.
Okay, so that seems to be a conflict. That codification seems to be a conflict with the Charter. And when there's a conflict, the Charter wins.
And I can understand your point. I don't see the conflict because it's still advisory.
Okay.
No matter what.
You get paid the big bucks, not me.
I guess, yeah, because I'm kind of with the, with Dieter in here a little confused. So, I guess to maybe use an example. So, let's take Hunter's Path right behind me. Let's say, planning commission recommended not approve the rezoning. Then it comes to council. And if it was a four to three vote to approve the zoning, what would have happened at that point?
Need five, according to that particular section.
Okay, that, that clarifies it a little bit. Well, I, I get, yeah, I guess it still is one of those, yeah, since they're technically, the whole, yeah, the big advisory is, is the word here. So, in that case, then it wouldn't, the, we would have, what would have had gone through would have been the recommendation of the planning commission to not rezone. In that, in that sense, if it was only a four to three, if it was four to three to say against the planning commission?
When you're talking about zoning matter, when you're talking about going against whatever the planning commission has recommendate, recommended, excuse me, then that, according to the code, takes five votes, not four. Anytime with respect to a zoning matter, you're voting to accept the recommendation of the planning commission, then that takes four votes. If that clarifies it.
You go back to your, your Hunter's Path issue. Rezoning the land, if they said not to rezone, not to change zoning, we said yes. We take five votes to override what they decided they didn't want. But you go back now with Hunter's Path. They have a development going. The plans go before the planning board. They make a recommendation. It comes here, if they want 65-foot lot and we say we want 80, we, we don't require five votes to override that.
Right, that's not zoning.
That's not zoning, that's other changes. So, that's where it'd be a four, three vote to overrule-
Right.
-override what their recommendation was.
Yeah, I mean, when I'm interpreting advisory, I'm interpreting, I'm interpreting that as their recommendation, no matter what the recommendation, it's only advisory to you. It's not mandated that you go along with their recommendation on a zoning issue or any other issue. That's how I'm interpreting that. The five, four, in my mind, is more of a procedural matter. Not, that does not, in my mind, go to the advisory issue because it's still advisory, no matter how many votes it takes. I can understand the argument from the other side. I really can. I mean, Dennis is a lawyer too, and so is Joyce. You, I can understand both sides of it. I have to fall down on one, and I fall down on, in my mind, we're still following it because all of the recommendations are advisory.
Yeah, I mean, it still, it still takes from us the legislation. Whether it, however we do it, we're the only ones that can codify it. I mean, they can't.
Does the Charter limit the number of lawyers we're allowed in here at one time?
It probably should.
So, I think at this point, as Joyce stated, it's a recommendation from the commission to just bear in mind that things that come from the planning commission are recommendations and that they are not, the council's not obligated to move forward with those things. They're not making, the commission didn't make any recommendation that we make any changes to the Charter in that area, just that it's borne in mind when things come before council that it's a recommendation.
So, like this one, it wouldn't be anything we would put technically on the ballot? It would just-
Right, it's not. It's just, yes. Well, it's like when the commission made the recommendation that everyone get the opportunity to speak before the final vote, before we do the second reading, we've moved visitors' comments prior to the second reading of ordinances. That came from Charter Commission.
Yeah, that's already in the Charter.
Right, right, yeah. And it's something that we could just do administratively and move things around on the agenda. Which we've been doing, so.
Yeah, I didn't mean to open up that, that box. I think, I think, I think my question's answered. But can we move on to another one? The, is it the recommendation on the mayor not being the primary? Do you have wording that you would change that to?
We didn't come up with wording with any, for anything. We, we left that up to council.
Because, I mean, I understand the argument, but I also think that, you know, Clayton has to have a face. And that's usually the mayor. And maybe we can work with the, with the wording on it so that we still get that face without, without-
Yeah, maybe-
The, the negative part of it.
I don't know, ceremonial, or, I don't know.
Is it, is, I mean, would anything, like, would anything take away from the ability, you know, in this case of Mayor Stevens, you know, in a, in a situation where economic, community development, there was, you know, the press here or something? You know, could he just base, you know, hi, I'm Mayor Stevens, and, you know, now the city manager will speak to you and answer questions? Nothing, I mean, even, even with this being in our Charter, there isn't really anything that would stop that from happening?
No, and I, and I think maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, Joyce, but was this, was the concern of the, of your group that, that it gives the mayor power that he does not possess or she does not possess by being the primary spokesperson?
Yeah, I think it was concerned that it doesn't, yeah, that it doesn't show that everybody is equal. I think maybe is what, what they were. And I don't think it was high on the priority list. Did you think, Bob?
Yeah, I would agree with that. And I'll take it to a position, you know, of community development. But, you know, that, that would be a logical place to point at. I think that's Jack. But, you know, that's where I was, that's where you have that in town. That's another individual, another position. But, yeah, that's a good perspective.
It's because it's written in the Charter, correct?
Yeah.
And then like other municipalities, maybe it hadn't been written in their Charter. So therefore, the city manager always is, usually a spokesperson in our surrounding municipalities.
Yeah.
I mean, I can tell you on, on day-to-day basis, it's Jack and I, if there's economic development issues going on. I mean, I suppose if there's a press conference or something like that, all of council would be invited to come to something like that, so.
You're going way against Charter, living in Brookville and being the primary, just kidding.
I've got two more years on the contract.
And my only concern of it is that it, council and the mayor are the elected office holders. And so, they should be the face, the mayor should be the face, on issues like this. I mean, just, and then they can turn it over, you know, to the city manager or to, or to Jack or to whoever. But it, it's, it gives it more legitimacy, so to speak. Maybe I'm just old school, but I've always seen, you know, mayors being basically the spokesperson for the community.
We could kind of use an example, just last week, you know, the, that Chief Hamlin was, it was just here, him with the press conference at the podium. I mean, I guess you could almost say by a technical sense, maybe that was going against Charter because it wasn't the mayor. Now, obviously, there was nothing inappropriate about it. It was, well, no, but it's even saying primary spokesperson for the city, the first part here. And the second, the other part is primary contact, is the contact for economic, community development. So, I guess, you know, you could read into that of almost saying in that example, technically, it should have been the mayor speaking on that by our Charter, by a technical sense. But obviously, it was the most appropriate to have Chief Hamlin on, on that topic. But obviously, it was the most appropriate to have Chief Hamlin on, on that topic. I'm just kind of bringing that up of, I mean, obviously, there's, there's no ramifications, you know, I don't, I don't think DeWine's going to come in here and say, and, you know, throw us on jail for, for doing that here, but.
Actually, he talked about that.
Okay.
No, it, and I, and I'm probably making way too much of this, but I just think flexibility is needed. And the question is, how do we do that with the public? How do we word that?
Well, and I would say, if you're not going to put four charter changes on the ballot, this would be one that could be.
Yeah. It wouldn't give anybody heartburn if we don't put it on there?
Yeah.
Okay. Then just continue to violate it on a daily basis.
Well, no, it's on there, and you do it that way.
It was put in that way, I think, for a specific reason at the very beginning.
Yeah. There, there was a lot of concern about the, like, oh, the pronouns, and, you know, updating the, you know, how the, the, how it was written and everything like that, that you wouldn't put on the ballot. So I don't know if you can change that. Martina, can you?
One way I have seen it done before is to put a charter amendment on the ballot that says, council has the authority via legislation to make non-substantive changes. And then if that passes on the ballot, they could then go back and change those he and she and all that, because it's non-substantive.
That's exactly what we talked about. We didn't.
And the mayor being the spokesperson.
Yeah.
We could change that, too.
And the what?
Mayor being the spokesperson.
Yeah. You could do that. Yeah. So that, that we, yeah, I think that would make, yeah. The commission would be happy with that. What's that?
As long as it's made clear to everyone, when that change is made, that what it implies.
Yeah. And you could give example, you know, for example, changing the pronouns, you know. That could be an example of a non-substantive change.
I was just thinking from the standpoint, you don't think we're trying to circumvent something?
Yeah, exactly. Which is not what, what I would intend. I would intend to make it strictly non-substantive, minor things like that.
Who are we going to say has the right pronouns, though, Martina? I mean, you go to Harvard and Yale, you get different pronouns for different people, you know?
There are ways to rewrite it that you don't have to use the pronouns, so.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that even pronouns really is what I wanted to say, but there are places where, I think Ohio's capitalized, and places where it's not capitalized, and that type of thing.
That would be a non-substantive.
Yeah.
It doesn't change the meaning of it, it just changes the format.
Yeah.
And by a technical sense, we'd be saving money by doing, because we're not having to put non-substantive things like those on the ballot. If, you know, if it comes down to, obviously, you know, if we were to put multiple things on there, it'd be the same, but something that's non-substantive that we, you know, that we see. I mean, we, we do this every year, technically, with like, you know, the employee, you know, with, I mean, those things have, have, every year come to us, that it's not, a lot of those, you know, non-substantive things that are highlighted of all this needed to be changed here that we noticed, and, you know, would be, obviously, the charter is more binding, or, you know, takes for higher precedence. But, you know, I think, yeah, something like that, I'd, I'd probably be in favor of, of seeing if the voters would, you know, would, would, wouldn't want to go with that.
Is there a timing when this would have to be presented to the, for a vote?
No.
For the public?
No. To get, there's no deadline for you to put it on the ballot. I know the deadline to put issues on the March ballot is December 20th. And then after that, the deadline to put something on the November ballot for next year, I think, is in August, beginning of August. So, but no, you do not have a deadline to put it on the ballot.
So there are two items that administrative staff wanted to discuss with council. One, we redid, or we did the ballot, the ward boundary study this year, and discovered that there was a potential to disenfranchise certain groups of people should we move the ward boundaries, because there's a requirement that someone live in a ward for 12 months prior to voting, and we didn't want to do that. So I think that it's pertinent that council consider legislation to put on the ballot, or ballot language, that would somehow work through that should a ward boundary study be required during a ward election. The second was the interim pay rates. Do you want to cover that, Martina, why that's something we need to address?
So basically, when the charter was written, you know, back in the late 1990s, adopted back in the late 1990s, it has a phrase in it that basically allows an interim increase for council members. And the concern with that was I'd seen certain ethics decisions that said, you can't do that. There's an Ohio Vice Code provision that says you're not supposed to do an interim increase or decrease. When this came up earlier this year, I did call the Ohio Ethics Commission. I was able to speak to one of their advisory attorneys, and he provided me some ethics opinions. And based on that, I think it's best if we probably, if we want to move forward to strike that out. If we don't strike it out, then I don't think it's a huge deal, because I would still follow the ethics decisions and recommend council follow the, the ethics decisions on that. If we wanted to get a formal opinion, I could ask the Ethics Decision, Commission if you want to do that. But I think based upon my discussion with him, I think we're better off not to do those interim increases and/or decreases, the way the law is written, to avoid a potential problem from the commission on that, which I wouldn't want.
Is something to amend within, have a charter amendment for?
Yeah. Yeah. If you want to amend the charter, what I would basically do is recommend charter language, which strikes out that one sentence that talks about interim increases.
I'd be in favor of that.
I mean, I think anytime there's a blurry ethics issue, I think we take the high road on that.
That was my thinking, because I'd rather err on the side of caution and not have somebody get tagged for something. It's not worth it, in my opinion. I mean, so.
So the next question I have for council is, do you want to try to get these items on the March ballot? So we don't have any language drafted, because we wanted to discuss with council what you wanted to do in the first place before we did that. So we would be in quite a time crunch. So we would need to bring language at the next council meeting, and then council would have to consider that and have it, and vote on it to get it on the ballot in March. As Martina said before, there's no requirement that, there's no time limit for you to put things on the ballot. We can wait until November of next year, if you would like. That would give us plenty of time to hold another work session, discuss language, see what you want to do, without being rushed.
Nothing's in jeopardy at this point.
No.
I think that's appropriate. Wait for November next year.
Rather be done right than be rushed.
It'll be the hot, it'll be the hot button saying on the November ballot next year.
Unless there are any questions, that's all I have for you.
Yeah. Anything else?
I think we ought to thank the charter commission, though, for their work this past year. Joyce and Bob are here, the rest of them aren't, but.
I'll call my mom, tell her thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the, thanks for the work and coming in tonight. I think it's much needed, and hopefully, we'll be able to, you know, do this as needed or, you know, on a regular basis. We need to make sure we keep up to.
I think it's every eight years.
Keep up to date, I guess you'd say.
It's in the charter, how often we review. It's in there.
Anyway, thank you, and good job. Appreciate that. Appreciate the work, and the rest of the committee also. Okay, did we advertise it to go straight?